It's live.
Welcome, everybody, to the budget hearing. That's about it. It'll be about a completed hearing. Penny, would you call the roll for yourself?
Mr. Burns.
Here.
Ms. Angeline. Ms. Meyer. Ms. Meister. Mr. Babel.
Yeah.
Ms. Bolton.
We have a court by zero, one absent. I believe Ms. Meyer is out of the country, I think, so. We'll get to that in the next round as far as excusing the absence. Uh, Ms. Ozer has a report that she needs to present to the council tonight and to the public. And, uh, depending on what turn it over, you, you have a background, what you have. And what is that?
Uh, this is something we have to report every year to the county. I've said this before, and I know most of you already heard it. But we're the only county in the state of Ohio that still reports this. It's just a forecast. It's a good report, one of my favorites. Um, it takes the years in the past. And the real numbers. And then we have appropriations for this year, you know, they're pretty strong. And then based on, you know, three percent, eight percent on insurance or whatever we're thinking, we can forecast that out. So on this, um, the general fund, I really want you guys, so you guys understand, I can't put levy because that hasn't been on or approved. So this is, this report is based on no levies being on, approved, except the ones that have already been. Yes, yes, this is.
No new.
No new, thank you.
Oh, actual.
This is actual, okay, I just.
So we do have one, and I wanted to make sure.
Right, no, this is what is based on what we have now. I know there's been talk of a new levy that has nothing to do with this report because nothing will approve. So I want you all to understand. That'll totally change, but I gotta turn this in. So, uh, there's a deadline, July seventeenth or something like that. Um, and that's okay. They just basically just, the county just looks at this to make sure nothing's gonna happen in the future that, oh, my gosh, you know, or. So it's kind of just to help them and us to keep track. But if you look on page three, now I put a note, general fund, if nothing is done, and I know the council and the mayor and the administrator, we have talked about this several times, 2029, it's, it's, it's in the hole, negative. Um, so I know that's why they are discussing, I believe, tonight on a levy, whatever kind of levy it's gonna be, that it will help the general fund and so on. Um, all the other funds, you know, like permissive gas, motor vehicle, that is basically takes care of the maintenance department, all the salaries, whatever, you know, supplies, equipment. Um, it's big, the park fund, we were just talking about, it kind of lives off the permits. And then, you know, whatever money we have, um, it'll just, and then we got the event fund, basically comes in, comes out, best year Christmas walk, summer market, any other events that you, the village does. Um, the big thing is the waterworks, you know, and Justin has worked really hard in the council through that eight percent increase. If that wasn't happening, the waterworks would have been in great trouble in a year or two. So the trend is, it is growing, and i- it's a good feeling, you know, for, you know, salaries, insurance. Insurance rates is outrageous. I don't think anybody understands. I mean, five, 10 years ago, we were paying over 20% a year increase on insurance. Well, you guys understand that you pay part of it. They have been down between eight and 12% the last few years. Hopefully that stays like that.
What kind of insurance are you talking about?
Health or health.
Property, either one.
All of it, yeah, all of it. It's outrageous, you know, and, um. Do you have anything you want to add on this, because I know you.
On the waterworks.
Or any of them, any of the, um.
No, I think you know it all.
Right.
Part of the report, and you work hard on it, I think.
Well, we both have. But remember, we're constantly looking at this, constantly looking at it. These numbers are not glued, they're not, they're a forecast, they're an estimate of what could happen. Okay, you know, we're saying, I'm just running, say we budgeted 500,000 general fund, we only do 400, that's only gonna help. You know, so it really just helps the council and, you know, the communities to understand what's gonna be happening in the future. Years ago, and Linda will remember this, years and years ago, we didn't have something like this. We went year by year. So we couldn't unless we did the math ourselves, and, you know, you could. But, so this is a great report to have.
Does the county, do they really want five years, or do they really only want?
It's only the next year. Really, it's only next year, but they like to see it.
Yeah, but they technically, they still go in year by year, and they just wanna see.
That is a good point. I really only, I can only, I really can turn this in with just 26 in the years past. But I always turn it in because I think it's just, it's a good document they have and.
Well, there used to be a lot of questions even in the past about when people hear budget, they think, oh, this is what we're gonna have.
This is not.
That's the appropriation. I think it's important to remember that in this document, Cindy is guessing and estimating what we're gonna finish the year with, guessing and estimating what we're gonna roll to next year and how much we'll bring in next year, and then guessing and estimating how much we'll spend next year and how much we'll finish with at the end. It's all based, based on your best.
The good thing is we can go back. So 21, 22, 23, and 24 is actual. Actual spent and brought in.
Right.
But the 25 on, it's a massive amount.
And I've heard, this is what they used to tell me, one of the reasons that we have to still do this is to justify to the county our need for the inside milling.
Yeah.
And so I think that's part of it, too, that we need to prove that we still need that portion of inside milling that we receive. So whatever the reason, whatever the reason.
We have to do it.
Housekeeping item that we have. We don't need to make it any more complicated than it already is.
So you guys can take that home and look at. At any time, and I, you guys know that council and the residents can email me, call me anytime with questions. I do not have a problem even sitting down with you and going over, you know, anything. So if they have any questions.
Any questions from council first? This question's from the public. Once again, I, I want to emphasize that this is our best guess. Okay, and we cannot predict the future of what could happen as far as expenditure. We have certain rich costs, but there's gonna be things to come up, whether that's a new bed on the truck down there, which they sorely need down at the, uh, maintenance department. Those type of decisions will be made as we continue throughout the year. But the primary part of it is here, Cindy, the question I have, and you, if I can ask this. If we were to put this on the website, you want all the pages on there? Because we can do that.
Yeah, I would. It's a public, yeah, public record.
But people, you gotta make sure people understand.
They aren't though, that's my, I know, I worry about that.
Well, the only thing I could do on that is on the front page indicates that if you have questions you don't understand, you can contact Cindy Ozer.
Right, that's fine, but.
And I'll push an email address in there. That's how.
But I would still, because if people see, oh, this is the budget, they're gonna be calling like crazy. I, I think we have to put on there.
You're willing to want?
I would, I would say no. I would say put a statement that says, if you're interested.
Yeah.
In receiving a more detailed explanation of the budget, contact Cindy.
Yes.
And then we can send the document to them.
Then I can explain it when I email it.
Whether it be email or whatever.
Right.
Then if they have questions, she can.
Or they can pick it up, and then I can explain exactly what it is.
Because even looking at some of the UAN descriptions.
Right.
Can be confusing.
Right.
I know them because.
Right.
I went to bed.
And I'm like, this is how you're all there with that. Counsel and what he wanted done, so we'll just make a statement, and we will lead into that, they contact you, and then you'll schedule a time.
There you go, yeah, I'm fine with that.
And if you want to leave some down here in Penny's office, in case someone walks in.
I think Penny has some there.
And requests one, she can provide it for him.
Penny has comments, if she should.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, are there any other questions from council? If not, we're going to adjourn. We're gonna leave the, the live though, because that way we don't have to worry about whether it regenerates. And we will reconvene in just a minute. So I need a motion from council to adjourn the public hearing.
Can we go ahead and adopt the budget in this public hearing?
I thought it had to be in a regular meeting.
I think it doesn't.
This is a public hearing, so I think it has to be at a regular meeting.
All right.
So do I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Bolton, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by, by Ms. Meister. And, uh, any discussion? Any, please call the roll.
Mr. Burns.
Yes.
Ms. Angeline.
Yes.
Ms. Meister.
Yes.
Mr. Babel.
Yay.
Ms. Bolton.
Yay.
We are adjourned. For those in home that are watching this, there's gonna be about a four-minute break. We will reconvene, so please, uh, give us a little bit of breaks here. And, uh, council, if you need to get up to take a break or something, or any of the residents, if you feel free to do that, we will reconvene in about.
Or if anybody wants a cupcake.
To make a birthday.
It was yesterday.
Oh, happy birthday.
Thank you. It's a choreo cupcake, so that makes it different. And please, please do not make me pay all these time. I'll take them into work tomorrow if I get them. They will be eaten tomorrow at 1:00. I work with a lot of young people that don't have to worry a bit about their weight. Although they eat healthier than I ever ate in my life.
Vacation.
Yeah, yeah, they will make that. And I found that.
So we gotta make, I don't see that agenda, we'll have that.
We'll just.
You'll take.
We'll take care of that with the motion following the.
Hey, one, okay.
So adopting the budget is not a resolution or a, yeah, it's a vote?
Yeah, it's a vote. I can tell you how.
I mean, I had that conversation just the other day.
I can tell you how important, or how lack of importance it is.
Well, I hear what you're saying, and, and I used to get very frustrated because this is, it was all, I was always so busy. And then to have to do this on top of everything else I have to do. Yeah, and it was like, for what?
Right.
You know, so then, okay, here's my best guesses. I mean, but then every time. They would question it. Well, is this our budget? Is this what we're gonna get? No. That's our appropriation. But budget is just a word that most people relate to their household bills. It's just a different podcast every day.
Does everybody out in the audience have an agenda and a package that they need? I've got a session four, is that I can pick up now? It's about one minute.
Okay.
I know they are. We only should go better than that.
I know better than that. He's a lot more than that.
They go large and.
Penny, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Burns. Ms. Angeline. Ms. Meyer. Ms. Meister.
Yes.
Mr. Babel.
Yeah.
Ms. Bolton.
Yeah.
We have five, or do you have a court? Uh, at this point, before we go into the rest of the agenda, we know that fire is out of the country. Uh, I would like to entertain a motion to excuse her absence.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Meister, do I have a second? Second by Ms. Angeline. Uh, any discussion? Penny, please call the roll.
Mr. Burns.
Yes.
Ms. Angeline. Ms. Meister.
Yes.
Mr. Babel.
Yay.
And Ms. Bolton.
Motion passes.
Oh, no, I haven't said anything yet.
I just took your.
She hasn't called my name.
I did.
She did call. Oh, I did. I'm here, I'm present, and yay.
Firstly, on the agenda in your package, council, is the minutes for June 25, 2025 special council meetings. Do you have any questions you want to ask about that first? And clarifications you need on those minutes? You have to know, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Oh, no.
Motion made by Mr. Babel, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Bolton. Any further discussion? Penny, please call the roll.
Mr. Burns.
Yes.
Ms. Angeline.
Yes.
Ms. Meister.
Yes.
Mr. Babel.
Yay.
Ms. Bolton.
Well, motion passes five zero. Before we go on to the June 25th, 2025 special council meeting, council, if you notice who there, we, we sort of shorted out the deal with the village council anchoring as a whole. We got as best we could, the questions that were asked by the public with more detail. And, uh, so if you have any questions about that, um, Penny and I work together on those minutes. I would be glad to answer any questions you have. No questions? Do I have a motion to approve the June 25th, 2025 special council meeting?
Oh, no.
Motion by Mr. Babel, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Burns. Any further discussion? Penny, please call the roll.
Mr. Burns. Ms. Angeline.
Yes.
Ms. Meister.
Yes.
Mr. Babel.
Yay.
Ms. Bolton.
Yeah.
Motion passes five zero. Now we have a pay-ordance, 07-2050 package for the residents that are home. Uh, that packet was sent out via email to those who have registered. It is also listed completely on our website. And, uh, council, you have the notations that Ms. Ozer has made. So if you have questions about anything on there, I would ask that you ask them now. Any questions out in the audience that you have on our pay-ordance that you would like to ask? There are no questions. Do I have a motion to approve the pay-ordance?
That made it.
Motion made by Mrs. Bolton, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Meister. Any further discussion? Penny, please call the roll.
Mr. Burns.
Yes.
Ms. Angeline. Ms. Meister.
Yes.
Mr. Babel.
Yay.
Ms. Bolton.
Well, motion passes five zero. Now we're gonna move on to the budget that Ms. Ozer has prepared and just discussed in the public hearing. Uh, if there are questions, please direct them to her. If not, I'm gonna ask if somebody make a motion to, to approve the budget so she can get it down to the auditor, I think we said by.
I think it's 17.
The 17, correct.
I'll make the motion to approve the 2026 budget to be presented to Hamilton County.
Motion made by Mrs. Bolton.
Second.
Second by Ms. Meister. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Burns. Ms. Angeline.
Yes.
Ms. Meister.
Yes.
Mr. Babel.
Yay.
Ms. Bolton.
Well, motion passes five zero. Cindy, I have a question just before. Uh, are you sending that to them?
I will handle it, yeah. I, I, I'll scan it till when they actually email me that, and say they got it, so I don't have to drop it all. So I can either call you.
All right, at this point, uh, we're gonna go to public comments, feedback. We asked if you want to speak, that you register with the village clerk prior to going to the podium. We would need your name, we would need your address. And tonight, because we just had a rather lengthy discussion with our residents on the proposal to, uh, put a levy on, we're gonna debate that later on tonight. Uh, I asked that you keep it to three minutes. Is there anybody that would like to speak to the council tonight? And Penny, nobody has come forward. So at this point, uh, we're gonna move on to our business. Mr., um, Amy, I don't know if we have any other business. Anything that we need to discuss here? If you'd love to leave it.
I'll do some.
Okay, so then we're gonna move on to new business. And this is gonna be ordinance.
Or, um, sorry, 22.
according to members of the Board of Zoning Appeals to preside collectively as a finer effect on the clean court. Uh, Mr. Amy, would you give us a little background into this ordinance?
This ordinance is appointing the members of the Board of Zoning Appeals to preside collectively as the finer effect. As we discussed, when we adopted the clean court, the, the intent is to have a quasi jury that will determine facts for civil violations in the clean court. And ultimately, you'll have a neutral or magistrate that will preside for anything procedural. So the magistrate's role is neutral in the clean court. Uh, be to make sure that everything operates procedurally correct. Ultimately, the members that are going to be appointed, uh, will determine liability or if we're not in these civil cases.
Question I have in here, this is not, uh, must of that as an emergency ordinance? Do we need to take a look at that as an emergency because otherwise, how much it take, how many days, like 30 days for it to go into effect?
Yes.
Don't we already have a, some cases scheduled?
We don't have any citations to clean court at this point.
Okay. So this doesn't have to be faster than.
I thought we could suspend the rule. And that was twice, we need to read it as an emergency, we can.
The only reason I ask that question is, I know you met with, uh, a code enforcement officer the other day, and I do know there's something there. It's scheduled or not.
Yeah, I had a lengthy discussion with him. That discussion involved Mr. Merkel. And the that meeting was determining how we're going to cite people. How the implementation faced this, and a lengthy part of that meeting was drafting standardized citation for them to use. That was actually yesterday. So I think if we suspend the rules, it gives us time to make sure that everything's in order, we want to be incited.
Any questions from council about this ordinance?
Um, I just have one, will you? Will the Board of Zoning Appeals have to be sworn in separately, or will there have to be some change in the document of the Board of Zoning Appeals to accept that?
I think the ordinance should take care of that, in the standpoint that it is basically saying they're gonna have two functions. One is Board of Zoning Appeals, where they make decisions, the other one would profit, make the codes. Currently, we don't cover that. I believe this ordinance does allow for that, or your legal advisor.
I think we need two minutes, where the men separate.
We do, okay. So how long, how long does the term be?
I, I think it should coincide with the DZA, exactly.
Okay.
Terms is already there.
Okay.
Just to come here and this correct, we will swear the men to the clean court separately, and their term will run concurrent with whatever the DZA is.
Does that need to be outlined in this ordinance?
It is, section two, the terms of appointment shall mirror, coincide, statutory guidelines for appointments to the DZA.
Any other questions from council? So if we pass this by suspending the rules, it will become effective in 30 days.
That, okay.
So council members, do you have any other questions you want to address? How about members of the public? Do you have any questions about the reason why we're looking at creating a, a clean court? Do you have a question?
Um, yeah, so why are we doing taxation by citation is what you're doing, correct?
I'm not sure I understand.
Motion, motion. Taxation by citation.
Yeah, you're giving citations, and that's how you're making money.
What would lead you to believe that that generates money? I think you were at the prior meeting, and I think that we outlined the intent was not to generate profit. In fact, it would, um, run in the negative. Do you recall that meeting?
Um, some of it, yeah.
So just to recap that, our, our goal here is not to generate revenue. In fact, council and the administration are aware that it's going to run a deficit. Effectively, it's going to cost the village money to create this civil court venue and address these quality of life issues. Um, it's not a revenue generator at all. In fact, council just passed a motion last meeting to appropriate $10,000 to abate properties. So effectively, the village is encumbering a burden to address blighted, blighted properties and blighted issues that certain residents of our community aren't. The goal is and always has been, uh, compliance. And I think that we've represented that through our early DZA hearings. There was one gentleman who faced over $3,000 in fines by letter of the law. Uh, but by color of the law, I don't believe he paid anything, did he? And I think that that just memorializes our intent here is not to generate revenue, but rather to gain compliance. And in fact, and I'll address this in my administrator's report, there's a county program, it's a great program, it's a 1% loan program, where in lieu of a code enforcement, uh, violation, we can reach out to a resident who wants to fix the issue but may have a financial hardship, they can apply for this loan. It's a 1% loan, they give you the money right away to address the issues, whether it's a root, siding, a tree in the yard, anything else. And I can get you more information on that offline if you have any other questions.
Okay.
Is there anything else, any other questions you have related to taxation or citation?
Um, no, that's not the biggest thing I'll raise back.
Thank you. If you have any other questions, feel free to call me at any time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Rocky, did you have a question?
Oh, no, no.
It's like being back in the classroom, I see the answer go out, I automatically.
I get that out of the octave, one scratching.
Oh, okay.
Low-horned it. Wait, you have that question?
I have to stop the whole octave. I gave you one of these. Well, Brady was.
Any other questions from the audience? Do I have a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance number 22-2025? Here I have a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-two five. An ordinance appointing the members of the Board of Zoning Appeals to preside collectively as the finder of fact on the clean court.
I'll make that motion.
Motion is made by Ms. Meister. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Angeline. Any further discussion? Any please call the roll.
Mr. Burns.
Yes.
Ms. Angeline.
Yes.
Ms. Meister.
Yes.
Mr. Babel.
Yay.
Ms. Bolton.
Yay.
Motion passes five zero. Now I need to have a motion to pass and adopt ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-two five. An ordinance appointing the members of the Board of Zoning Appeals to preside collectively as the finder of fact on the clean court.
I'll make that motion.
Motion is made by Ms. Meister. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Babel. Any further discussion? Any please call the roll.
Mr. Burns.
Yes.
Ms. Angeline.
Yes.
Ms. Meister.
Yes.
Mr. Babel.
Yay.
Ms. Bolton.
Well, the motion passes five zero, sorry. Yeah, next ordinance. That we're gonna look at tonight is. So the ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty-two five. An ordinance establishing restrictions on parking of recreational commercial vehicles of public roadways within the Village of Cleveland. Would you go ahead and update the council why this is happening and the purpose?
Sure. We've had, we've been flagged with, uh, commercial vehicles, uh, recreational vehicles, specifically RVs, trailers, boats, semis that are parking in residential areas. Especially in our high density residential areas where there's not a lot of off-street parking. On-street parking's at a premium, and then you have a thirty or forty foot RV that takes up the entire block range. That's only one issue that inconveniences our, our residents. Um, they have family over, if they don't wanna park on a, on a steep hill, it really limits parking. But I think in some of these incidents, and I, I viewed it personally. When you have an RV that parks right at the curb of the apron of your driveway, it creates as, it's a massive blind spot. And you're basically, uh, just praying that you get out safe every time you back out of your driveway. I don't think that's, uh, I don't think it's fair. And I think that we have a duty to keep our roadways safe. So that's why we're presenting this thing.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
We used to have in our zoning ordinance that you couldn't even park an RV in your driveway more than seventy-two hours. Which you could unload, you could load and unload to go camping, bring it home, and you could unload. But you couldn't even park it in your driveway. Are we allowing those vehicles now to be parked in driveways? Boats, uh, campers?
So I don't, if that, I'm not aware if that was on the books, I'm sure.
I don't know if it was part of our zoning or if it was part of the Ohio Basic Code. I don't remember, but it's been over ten years.
I'm sure it was probably part of our basic code.
I think it, um, it can't be, the plan of the front of the house, it can't extend beyond that. Well, I think it, I believe it was. Well, it was a total ban on RVs in people's driveway and boats. And we forced people to get rid of that. Yeah, it had to be all the way in the back.
It, it may have been, I.
So you're not addressing that issue with this ordinance?
This doesn't rescind any off-street parking issue. This is specifically restricting on-street parking in recreational.
Even for loading and unloading? So someone is going camping.
There are exceptions here.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I've got a question about commercial vehicles. So it. My concern is that a lot of people drive trucks, vans home from work. And I don't want to do anything that's gonna interfere with someone's livelihood. Um, but in the exceptions, it does say that, um, commercial vehicle or is there an exception as long as they don't exceed twenty-two feet length, seven feet width, ten foot height? What's the average, like a work van or a big pickup truck? What's the average dimensions of some vehicle?
So the, the Loveland Bridge that everybody always hits, the clearance on that is. Uh, that's just why I use this as my frame of reference here. And it's always been people taking top one. So for example, your Kroger, uh, the ClickList truck.
Yeah.
They won't make it through this. They, they're just over. Why they.
They can only extend more than ten foot height.
No, they don't extend.
So your average work van could fall into the exception.
That's, yes, that's my understanding. And, uh, well, thank you, Mr. Babel. Actually, my, when this, when I first generated this, it, it was a, a draft. And, uh, Councilman Babel brought me that, it was a good idea. They extended it to ten, I agree.
Just of my personal experience of driving a work van for eighteen years. Um, I had three ladders. I had a central ladder. I had a twelve foot ladder, a ten foot ladder, and a fifteen foot ladder on top of my van all the time. And I know I was over ten feet, by that's fifty feet. So it was just a matter of that. And then, um, there's other vehicles in the, like in Westgate, there's a gentleman and they had a, um, a small line truck like the, like the Billy Jones. Yeah, I know that's over eighty. So it might not be ten, but I'm pretty sure it's over eight. So it's another restriction, you know, to pull it up really with a big bunch of stuff.
Yeah, and what I, what I can say to this, in similar communities, not the same, but similar. You win, in my community, you can have a certain length of, but that doesn't include, uh, attachments that aren't fixed to it. So, you know, I can attribute the same thing to, let's say, there's a work van that's got a ladder running. Well, that's not a fixture to this vehicle, it could be removed. And again, remembering that our local authority is going to enforce this, uh, as a, as a parking ordinance. And we're going to police these things, uh, off the letter of, they're the color of the law, not the letter of the law. Uh, this is really designed for somebody doesn't pull a semi or a U-Haul style lot truck. And we're not even blocking that. If it's a truck with a ladder rack that might be ten feet, six inches. That's not the incentive to, um, be here to do this.
But the newer report that's coming out now, a guy in six foot, six foot two can actually walk inside the vans. And then they're throwing ladder racks on top of it. So, and that's getting, you'll see it more and more of them.
So we are going to ten feet?
Yes, it is resistant.
Ten foot height, seven feet in width, one feet two feet in length. And you're assuming that a work vehicle is gonna be pulling, it's gonna be gone most of the day, if it's a work vehicle. If someone appears on the street and is sitting there for weeks at a time.
A terrible stipulation on that.
Okay.
On how long vehicles, any vehicle on the pitch at all.
Used to be, I wanna make sure, it's taken, it's to be seventy-two hours or something. They could chop the tires.
We still, well, you can't chop the tires, I mean, there's a deal on that. But thi- this is separate from an overtime parking issue, which we do have. Yeah, I think it's important that, like, nobody's going to drive around and necessarily look for these things and proactively address it. This is a mechanism for us to address complaints as they arise. Um, just, you know, I've only been here since September and I've, I've had multiple complaints. And as I go out and look at them, Z does, M does, they're all valid complaints. So, you know, our couples have to drive out around the tape measure and make sure you don't have some that's ten foot in length. But the part of the purpose is to make sure that our vehicles are helping. Aren't taking a bite apart. Thanks for making that eight to ten, it was a great point. Thank you very much, your beat.
Any other questions from council? How about the board?
We've been told in the past that the county sheriff won't enforce our ordinances. They'll just enforce the Ohio Advice Code. There was a timely article in the Inquirer during the last few days that addressed parking on the street. It looked like there are ordinances, Ohio Advice Code ordinances, that will they enforce it or certain, or not?
Theoretically, they, they will enforce any parking ordinance that's in the Ohio Advice Code. The issue there is, generally speaking, as long as it's not creating a hazard in the roadway and it's a registered vehicle with a valid registration. They can't do anything. Also, you know, if it's not causing a hazard and it's got a sticker on it saying it has valid registration. Sheriff's office is really limited in forcing parking, especially in our suburbs.
And that's kind of what you're saying about the ten foot, uh, rule and six foot rule is. I understand.
Any other questions from those in the audience? So this one is a, uh, not a emergency or, or bills.
That's not.
Not a bill. So if there's no more questions by councilor. I would ask that you make a motion, somebody make a motion that we suspend the rules for ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty-two five. And ordinance establishing restrictions on the parking of recreational and commercial vehicles on public roadways within the Village of Cleveland.
I'll move.
Motion made by Mr. Babel. Do I have a second?
I may try to forget one, one thing, and I don't, it may not make any difference, but we've got the, the pages number one, two, three, but when you print it, turn the group back. It's got one of six, three of six, five of six.
It, it.
And it makes it look like there's pages missing, because they're armed, because it's actually one, two, three.
Right, and I, it does, it does some funky things with our agenda when we print it off also. I think it's just a matter, it's a matter of printing on dry or downloading and printing. I'll make sure in the future that when we print these packets, we download it and print them, so. It is a lot of room to set where they can be thought, or even, so.
All right, I think Ms. Angeline second. I correct her now? So we have a first and second. Is there any further discussion? Any please call the roll.
Mr. Burns.
Yes.
Ms. Angeline.
Yes.
Ms. Meister.
Yes.
Mr. Babel.
Yay.
Ms. Bolton.
Yay.
Motion passes five zero. Now I need a motion that we pass and adopt ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty-two five. An ordinance establishing restrictions on the parking of recreational and commercial vehicles on public roadways within the Village of Cleveland.
I'll move.
Motion made by Mr. Babel. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Bolton. Any further discussion? Any please call the roll.
Mr. Burns.
Yes.
Ms. Angeline. Ms. Meister.
Yes.
Mr. Babel.
Yay.
Ms. Bolton.
Yay.
All right. Motion passes five zero. Now we're gonna get into some discussion. Resolution number ten. The resolution declared the necessity to levy a tax in excess of the ten mil limitation. The purpose of providing for operational expenses for the Village of Cleveland, Hamilton County. And further requesting the county audit to satisfy matters in connection, therein, requesting certification from the Hamilton County auditor. For the public and for the council. Uh, whatever it is you decide, whether it's a three and a half mil, a four mil, or a four and a half mil. We have to do a resolution tonight. And then whatever the amount is that you decide, you will have to craft that ordinance. And I think Mr. Mr. Merkel has, regardless of which one it is, will be able to print that out. Uh, and, and adopt that if you so choose to adopt it. You can also simply say, we're not doing it. That's up to you also. Um, so at this point, I, I think we just need to open it up to council and hear what your thoughts are and what those thoughts could be. And before we vote, I'd like to open it up to our residents. You would have heard exactly what their debate is. And you also should consider your view of this too, as residents. So I don't care who opens it up for discussion, but where is council on a safety levy? Okay, and we keep in mind a safety levy can pay only for police and fire. So I'll open it up to whoever wants to.
On their start, I'm not vengeful about that.
You know that.
Um. If we sat here and really dissected everything, things that we wanna do in the future, the things we wanna do. We could find a reason to justify an eight point O levy. That doesn't mean the residents are gonna give it to us. I strongly support the four point O. I believe we have taken a year and a half to show our residents our intent, but I think we have more to show them. And I think in the next couple of years, we can show them a lot more of what we wanna accomplish and do. And I personally think that the four point O makes sense to me. And that is the one that I am most anxious to support. I think we can, won't have any trouble justifying that every penny of that money on a four mil levy is going to our police and fire contract. And that to me is important, even though we will have to subsidize in the future, potentially subsidize again. We're gonna have to do that unless we ask for a six or seven mil. We're gonna end up ju, we're gonna end up subsidizing some money out of the bill. So it's just my personal feeling. That's how I feel about it. I'd like to have another year or two to accomplish more, to check out finances more, to look at what we can do once we have freed up that money in the general fund to go towards police and fire. And we as council have really not had any of those discussions about our future goals, what council wants to do. We've never sat down and had those discussions. What are our priorities? What do we wanna? And I just think it's important for us to do that before we ask for more money. That's my personal.
The other members want to comment?
So my thoughts on it, and I apologize that I don't have my spreadsheets with me with the exact numbers. Um, we definitely need and can justify the four or the four point five. Um, in regards to our fire contract, our fire EMS contract with significant increase in that, as well as police contract. We've gone back and forth about streets and the need for street repairs and the need to put money aside. I strongly feel that by putting a levy on. You shouldn't put one on that if, before the life of the levy is up, it's going to put us back to where we are now. I think if we're putting on the levy, I think I am in favor of the four point five. Because that will take us through the five years of life of the levy as far as the supplementing for the police and the fire contract.
That half a mil, so maybe it's not yet.
The, the latter to that.
What's that half of?
It would get, what, forty, forty-one?
Four and a half mils. Four and a half mils gotta generate three hundred and seventy-five thousand twenty-seven dollars. And the cost to a property owner on a hundred thousand dollar home value would be a hundred and fifty-eight dollars a year, and that's based on the market ground. Whereas a four mil will generate three hundred and thirty-three thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And it's a hundred and forty dollars, there's an eighteen dollar difference.
For a year.
Per one.
For every one hundred.
Yeah, for every one hundred thousand.
So the, the levy that, the renewal levy that failed was five point O?
It, it was a six.
It's six mil levy, so even if we're putting on four point five, it is still a mil and a half less than the renewal levy that failed three years ago and subsequently failed the additional attempts. But I strongly feel that if we're putting a levy on, it should generate enough money to cover the expense that we're going to be using it for, for the life of the levy.
And four point five will do that?
Oh, yes.
Well, here we go another, yeah. We're asking for too much then, if we only have to, if we only have to make it up out of the general. We're asking for too much then, if we only have to, if we only have to make it up out of the general fund in five years. Well, eventually it will, I would say, it would. Once eventually, you're saying, actually, forty grand a year will keep us from having to subsidize out of the general fund at all?
It saves us two-hundred, over two-hundred-thousand dollars in subsidizing the general fund over the, uh, over the life of levy. Uh, and with the four-mil levy, the general fund will encumber a hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand-two-hundred-and-seven dollars and thirty-three cents in twenty-thirty. Whereas in a four-and-a-half mil levy, in twenty-thirty, the general fund will only encumber eighty-seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-two-hundred.
So four and a half thousand totally what? No, but it does help rebuild it, the general fund in the beginning, and then it'll eventually what?
It only, it, the only year with a four-point-five mil levy, in twenty-twenty-nine, you have a residual of sixty-six thousand, so twenty-thirty is the first year the general fund will start to uh, have to subsidize
figure.
these contracts. If you, the four-mil levy, uh, would run a surplus of nineteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars in twenty-eighty. Then in twenty-nine, there'll be a hundred-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-five-dollar subsidy from the general fund. In twenty-thirty, there'll be a hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand-two-hundred-and-seven dollars.
That's what we're estimating, uh, the sheriff's contract will be up four-two-thousand, whatever you write.
Yes, and I think it's important that again, everything's a projection, and it's like a hypothesis, and Cindy and I have built in some increase on the sheriff's contract, but there's, I mean, there's a real possibility that it exceed what our forecast is.
You also talked in length about potential improvements like TIFs, uh, the district, we recently revitalization district, the potential for us getting revenue from other sources. Um, and I think a couple more years will give us the ability to explore whether that is going to come to fruition. Um, that's another thing that I was thinking as well. Well, that will help, if you buy your levy, that'll help to know. Well, yeah, especially in a year or two, if someone says, we need an income tax. Right. I mean, so I think that, uh, there's so many different possibilities down the road that I'm a little, but that's just me, I'm one person. The levy that was voted down years ago that you guys had on there, what was that?
It was general operating level.
And what was the village on that?
I remember it was like the nine, six mil.
So they had that on, right, the village lost that, so.
Yeah, we lost that three years ago.
Right, then, okay, so that was on the earth. At the most recent one was seven. Absolutely. Right, to replace that, so we're really, we're, you guys are just basically trying to recruit what you have before.
So this is a safety levy, it's for the fire and police contract. This will, the four and a half will put us in a much better place throughout the life of the levy as far as covering it. Do you expect that the police contract may go up? Which if it does, then the general fund will have to supplement more than we're expecting. Um, but as far as the general fund, the money that we're freeing up in the general fund, we haven't had any money because streets projects, our maintenance put-in is, is things don't get addressed, we, we've been barely getting by for the last three years since the levy fair, we've really been peaking pennies and cutting back. So I don't, I don't think it would behoove us to do four versus the four-point-five to put us right back to where we are now in four years.
So are we totally scrapping the potential to have a street levy next year, even if it, to put a street levy on for even a half a mil?
If we're.
Because if we're scrapping that, then maybe it doesn't matter so much, but.
So in our discussions, the purpose of the street levy was to increase our odds of, of any grants, grants. But in the discussions that we had, that's not necessarily needed in order to get, because, wait, Dustin, you got, yeah, so.
Sure.
The street levy, the purpose of putting on a street levy, so we have the dedicated street levy funding to help increase our points for getting grants. But, um, that's not necessarily needed now, because.
Sure, so, here's, yes, so with our, as long as it's a dedicated tax funding source, it gives you, I think what we're, we're all talking about is the, uh, scoring incentive.
Yes.
For the bonus points. So those apply for the state, uh, skip grants, but not for, um, the municipal fund. So the municipal road fund funds through streets that connect communities, skip grants to the state, um, or every other. So if we did have a street levy, that is certainly a dedicated funding source, it gives you the incentive points for skip grants. However, we look at some of the streets that we've got our engineer going after for funding, uh, those are either through streets or, uh, they're currently or proposed to be under a tip, which will be a dedicated funding source and give us that, those increases.
The the TIF is what I was trying to remember, the TIF, if we could do the TIF, that would serve the same purpose as a street levy as far as generating those points.
But the word there is if. I mean, if we do it, but we're planning on tipping, doing the TIF, but that's, yes, in the plan.
For those out in the audience, if you're not familiar with skip funds, those are funds that are, if you don't have a tip, it just goes down to Hamilton County. And Hamilton County is termed suspended. If we have a TIF district, then there's a set aside that goes into an account for the village, that the village should use. And that money doesn't go to, to the county, it's actually refunded back or accounted back to us. And so I know you have a lot of experience in my township, that, could you elaborate on that?
Yeah, it's just, um, any new development, you can tip it, and that money comes straight, I mean, the township gives a lot of money.
That money can be used for improvements, for rate projects.
Right, major, you know, vehicles, right, buildings, you know, that's how the township has built a lot of these, in parts, you know.
And it doesn't raise your tax. Okay.
Right.
So that's a good thing, if you can do that, really, but it is, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we have potentially, what, six new houses being built? I mean, we don't have, we're pretty tight-knit, we, it's not like we have potential for huge development, correct?
No, not a huge, no.
Well, I think, you know, Cindy, your, your point is well-taken. There is a, there's a realm of possibility that currently, uh, established neighborhood could be TIF. And I don't think it's a matter of if it happens, but when the tip occurs, because, you know, statistically, we have the ability to tip any new development. And there is a development going, so I think it's really a question of, uh, when, not if, that tip goes in. Now, what will it generate, I'm not sure. But, you know, specifically, this new development is going to be in Coleman Woods. This is part of a conversation we need to have at a later time in the winter depth, but there, there's a realm of possibility where we can tip all of Coleman Woods. And not that we're going to, not that if, if that happened, not that we then get rich because we're gathering all this money, but on a new about, new valuation, you know, valuation is a ten percent, we would get the tip on all of Coleman Woods on that, you know, increased valuation. And this is part of kind of collaborative effort for Stormwater District addressing the pension basins in Coleman Woods and our infrastructure, so it is going to happen. I think the only reason we haven't applied on the tip at this point is if Mr. Merkel and I have done some research on trying to do an overlay of all of Coleman Woods rather than just the new development.
So we are gonna have new sources of revenue going into the general fund?
Well, that's.
That would be TIF, or a TIF, but it could be spent on the major stuff. Yes.
It could be spent on infrastructure.
My point in bringing that up was that that would give us the points in the, um, where? The grant application rather than.
Right, and that would probably be the street levy, so.
Do the four and a half, you know.
Yeah, but the other reason for the street levy was to dedicate money that would fix streets, and then, I remember when we let the street levy run off, and in our mind, we said, look, we've got all this new development coming up in Coleman Woods, we'll appropriate eight-thousand dollars a year in the general fund, and we will fix the street, but we never did it. So that, that's something that's in my mind, like, concerns me. The streets are important to me because I see the deterioration of some of our streets. I also see that we haven't done any in-depth street construction, or reconstruction, or repavement in years. And so I, that's one of my concerns, but that's fine, I'm just one person. Just one thought.
I like, um, you know, so the eighteen dollars difference per, felt like, I'm not sure that the general population is gonna see it that way. Um, I think one thing that will help if we make sure they know it's, a lot of it's going for the contract. Especially with the recent, you know, news story that came out. Um, I think it's important that people realize it's for the contract, for the fire contract basis.
And boards.
Yeah, and the lease. But I think they, they really need to understand that, 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 because I need to see them come through.
Definitely, absolutely, I agree with you, and I think that even, that media outlet do that as well, the numbers are over the line, and so. I think we've done our due diligence here with the documents, and I think it'd be great if we, we put those out. Again, anybody that's like them, I'll provide them.
Kevin, you were, you, I think we're wanting to say, you know, chime in on how, how we're, our viewpoint, but, so I'm aligned with the four-point-five as well, sorry to be contrary to that. Um, the, the only thing I want to say about how we're thinking about the different things that we want to ask for is that we're only asking for this now, and that's future council's problems, future village's problem. Um, if, if there's kind of assumption that we're putting all of our eggs in the same basket, that's one thing, but really, we've done a decent job prioritizing here by saying, well, the villages are required to provide the safety services, otherwise we're not a village, we get kicked out. Um, this is, like you said, there, there's a, a small bit of calculus to do about when the money comes in and when it must go out. But realistically, you're building a very small bolus of support in a fund for safety services that we then start spending a year for, once this is approved. I don't even know if that accounts for a six-month lag in voting for it, and, you know, one-year lag in doing this stuff. Uh, maybe it is, it counts, you're not important.
I think, Kevin, with the past, November, we would start collecting the action. You know, in, in twenty-twenty-six.
Yeah, I, I'm just saying, I'm not gonna be able to process those, there's a line with that. Um, uh, and the, we will exhaust the public's ability to pay no matter what we justify it with, like, if we talk about streets, and we use my back-of-the-envelope math, I think it's something like a fifteen-mil levy we'd need for fifteen years to repair just with unmatched funds. And that, that's never happening in a million years. Um, the, that's not, not to say that we couldn't be grant funding, but our small village, and I think it's still attractive, I think we just have to ask at that, like, yes, thank you for your vote of confidence, if you've approved this levy now for safety services, this allows us to continue. It has the, the benefit of mostly paying for what we need there, and just not harming the general fund, what we keep talking about is that it's supplementing, it's never gonna flow into the general fund. It's just taking less from it, so that, that, you've been making a rhetorical error as we've been discussing this, look, you need to correct that, this is not going into the general fund. It's helping save it by taking less from it. Um, and, but the, the point is the same, is that that's important considering how much we're gonna potentially pay this from the general fund. So I, I think those are only rhetorical flourishes on that, but I think they're distinctions that I want to make. Um, and the, on the, on the scale of it, we choose four-point-five over four, we have that two-hundred-thousand-dollar difference net over the five years. Um, uh, I would look to year five, when we've had an unknown increase from HCSO. Uh, we've had, we've endured more inflation, so we're gonna be in another position there, like, man, that really will help things be less dire at that point. I, I think we'll be much happier if, like, say, we get no other levies in the meantime. Um, but I, I think that is advancing our ability to keep our options open at that time. Yeah, it's not about us, it's, it's your. I think those are all the points I wanted.
I think I'm just a little skittish because it's failing. So I think I'm a little skittish about what our residents might be willing to support.
And what they can now, right?
Right, I mean.
We're all with you.
Yeah, so that, I think that's my issue, and a half a mil's not that big of a difference, I just.
I think it's an open question, doesn't look that scary, that much scarier on the ballot, as four-point-five or four, I, I never knew the answer.
I'm gonna vote four, but I just would prefer a four for that. You know, I'm not gonna go in and vote no. Yeah, but I, I'm probably the rare bird that has voted yes on everyone that was on.
Mr. Babel, can you add very, you want to add to this discussion?
I just, I, I'm just answering, this still doesn't, does this cover the full cost of our fire, you know, wing? So what percentage, what doesn't, what's the amount it doesn't cover? Uh, I mean, that's important, we're talking numbers for four-point-five, but I think what's more important for people to know is the general fund's still gonna pick up a percentage of this contract.
No.
This levy is gonna, is strictly for fire and police, but it doesn't pay a hundred percent for fire and police.
Correct. In this, it only pays, the numbers, the figures we're using are the contract costs. Our billables to Miami Township Fire Department and the sheriff's office, it, it still doesn't address fuel costs, the electric, internet, vehicle costs.
Nine-one.
Uh, our comm center fees, it doesn't address any of that, that will still come out of the general fund. But the contract cost, or the appropriated cost, uh, for those contracts, four-mil levy, the general fund will supplement two-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand dollars for the life of the levy, if you were to go with a four-and-a-half mil levy, that number then becomes eighty-seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-two.
But we really don't know what the police levy is going to be, why here will that contract expire?
The contract expires in twenty-seven, so we'll have a new contract.
I think we base that on ten percent too, that we.
We base it on ten percent, I think if anything, our numbers probably look.
Yeah. Right, if we had counted all that for the fire, we'd have been a D two.
Right.
Right?
How about residents, what's, you have any thoughts on this process?
On the TIF, you mentioned putting all Coleman Woods under TIF, even if it's active for the new developments that they're planning, or some of the houses that have been there twenty-five, twenty-eight.
We're exploring the potential of putting all of the homes under a TIF.
It wouldn't cost, it would like cost. No, I know, it would cost, and, and then about the a hundred-and-fifty-four dollars or six dollars, uh, for one-hundred thousand, is that one-hundred thousand assessed value or market value?
It's like the market value.
It's on market value. So you've got a lot of houses under, or, yeah, three thousand. So you, a hundred-and-fifty-six times five.
Uh, so I'm not a resident, please.
You're fine.
Right, uh, and part of the, uh, it's, my point is tied to my road. And part of the selling point about us possibly being annexed by police, we would pay less in taxes. And the first thing that comes up before anything has happened yet was there's gonna be a tax levy going on, so that we're gonna be getting more taxes. I understand that Miami Township is also looking into tax levies? That, I, I don't think it's being out of place, Cindy, probably.
What, what was that?
That Miami Township is also looking at.
You're looking at general fund.
Maybe, yeah.
Yeah, it wa, it was brought up at the last.
Right, probably just renewing it, but yeah, right, it's always looked at. Right, probably just renewing it, but yeah, right. It's always looked at.
I, I, I'm, I don't want to be moved to cleaves, but immediately face a tax increase.
If, if I could answer your question, I think what you're asking, if this levy passes, whether it's a four, a four percent, you're going to be paying. Less taxes. Okay, than what Miami Township currently will be doing. And the four point five, I think you're still going to be paying less when you take in the water, so.
The water's only thirty dollars a year.
Well.
And the, when my wife figured out the number, and it would not be, the difference right now is we pay. We use that our neighbor's house that's in our neighborhood that is part of the leaves as a template to see what they paid for taxes versus what we have paid. And we pay, uh, I don't have the number in front of me, I'll, I, but it's.
Keep in mind it's going up next year.
I, I'm, I know, but it's also. I don't like the idea of, I don't know for sure that it's going up next year.
Absolutely it's going up next year. Because you pass the four point five mil levy or your fire is going up, it's going to be going up.
No question, right.
So if I. I had to phrase it the right way. It does not feel right if that's what would be, I, 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 I don't think the numbers line up the way that they do. I don't, I don't think they do.
Well, you're, you're anticipating that's going to actually be a next. But for this particular discussion right now, we're dealing with this village.
Oh, I.
And this, and this village, regardless of you're in it or you're out of it, has to provide, it has to provide. Okay, now, I'm going to go just one step over. And I'm not saying it's always been that way. I'm not saying it'll be that way in the future. But the other morning I got a phone call at seven AM, I was talking to Mrs. Wolf about it. One of our, I actually got a text message. By seven oh four, I was in contact. I don't think that would ever happen in Miami Township. I guarantee you.
With all due respect, I, that communication back and forth, like, I understand that the personal thing and, uh, or the way that you have handled it. I have not been, I'm not dissatisfied with Miami Township in any way. So I'm, I'm talking specifically about dollars here and the tax, uh, uh, the tax increase that we would face. Uh, if we're brought into these, I mean, like, it would be, if we're annexed and we're brought in, it's like, okay, here. But welcome, welcome to our village. By the way, you're going to be taxed though. That's, that's what I mean.
And I would tell you regardless of what you think you've run that numbers, you're going to be paying more in Miami Township, even with the tax.
That's done. We're, we're pretty confident you're better off in Cleaves with the four, with the increase of four point five still. So here's my rule of thumb, and people who are knowledgeable, who can take care of my uncertainty, will run the numbers with you. Okay, um, when we have the five point nine on, which we've lost, we were lower than Miami Township then. So we're now five point nine lower. We're talking about adding four point five back with new valuation, so we have to do more calculations. Um, but on balance, it should either be close to, uh. The, the same amount, but with good room to be lower.
Yeah, it has been pretty comparable for many, many years, uh, with us being a little less, especially when that levy failed. Uh, years ago, thirty years ago, no, we were way higher. We had a park levy on, a street levy on, we had, you know, all these levies. Um, that we let drop off, and when we did that, then we became almost comparable, and that was over twenty-five years ago. So I think it's pretty close and I think we will be lower, but I mean, you have to see how all the numbers crunch out. We're trying to replace the levy we lost three years ago.
So twenty twenty-one.
Three years ago. So our residents have actually been rewarded with a reduction that has been us financially for the last. Three years because we had the levy fail three months.
That, that's the point where his critique is valid, right? We're talking about our perspective, yeah, we're, we're kind of clawing back to, to where we were, but if somebody's telling you that. Oh, it's about five, six, seven mils lower than Miami Township right now, yeah, we are. For you, and if you get annexed, yes, we, we would be clawing at that. And that, that can leave a sour taste and.
Yeah.
We acknowledge that reality.
And that's in the future. We need to be voting on tonight what we're going to do, so I'm going to go back to Cleaves residents.
I have one more thing to say in regards to you. I can see where your concern is and where you're coming from. What you have to keep in mind is we're talking about putting down a four point five safety service. Miami Township just passed the same four point five levy, so it's kind of a wash, really.
You guys found a tax cut too this year, simply because of the fact that your levy fail is coming back to you next year.
I, I, I understand that, and, uh, uh, I've researched that, I'm saying that the way that Kevin described is the. We're better, we're better rewarding it, but I, I appreciate you saying that because that's, that's what it, it feels like, and it's.
Yeah, but that's something that hasn't happened and we're talking about in the future. It doesn't mean you're going to be annexed. We've got tonight, we have to make sure. We address the needs of our residents right now. Not if you're in concern. But I really need to hear and so does Castle, of the residents who live here in Cleaves. What is your feeling? Four, four point five, what is your view?
I, I understand that, I just, I was voted in your newsletter and it, I. I want to make my voice heard before, if it happens, I don't want to come back and someone say, well, why don't you speak up before it happens? You need to speak up, saying that, so.
And what you're saying tonight will be reflected in the next one, so. Anybody, our village that wants to address their feelings about levy.
How, how much is the, uh, Township's trash levy for? And when did that take effect?
It's already been back.
Yeah, it's been there for years.
Rocky for the Township?
Yeah, our levy, garbage levy, yeah.
How, how much, how many dollars was that?
Um. Two point two and a quarter. Yeah, we've had that on for years. I mean, we increased it, it was one point seven five, and then. A few years ago, we increased it to just this rocky two, but, um.
And keep in mind that is based on your house valuation. The more your house could value, the more you pay for garbage. The village of Cleaves, you pay a set amount.
You're getting billed, right?
You're being billed.
So if you have a, a four hundred thousand dollar house in Township, it would be significant. He for trash collection.
I think the break in, the break even is for what most Cleaves residents pay, and I'm not talking about everybody, but just on average. Okay, if you have a house in Cleaves that's a three hundred thousand dollars or higher. You're definitely saving money by being in the village. It's under that amount. In, you're not, okay, saving that much because it's a lower amount you're paying. So if you go out to, let's say, East Miami River Road, you might only pay thirty dollars a year. On your, on your property tax or your garbage pickup, and you get the same service. The same pickup as somebody who's living in a six hundred thousand dollar home was paying. My head, I pretty much, you're beginning to fall.
I know the township does it because we know the town, because it's getting picked up. No billing and it just, it's basically a wash. Like, the taxes and the bills are paid. And, you know, the township knows that, and I'm sure if here you don't have a problem, but, you know, it's.
But we're only able to do it because we have a function in Water Works.
Right, right, you guys are lucky with.
Yes, and if you have every resident out there on their own, you'll have residents who decide they don't want to pay for garbage.
Right, then it's just.
And they go and I'm afraid garbage, I'm a real nuisance, yes.
And it happens regardless if garbage is picked up or not, you know that.
Oh.
There are some people.
It still happens.
It still happens. Okay, whereas in the village of Cleaves, if we're functioning like a government, it isn't going to happen. Any other residents have questions or comments? Any preference about the village? You agree with a four point, a four point five, in what is your view?
Four point five. About the last five years, they said, right? So why not just do that then? And you got to make people know it's about fire and police, right? It's a big, big deal to me because we have to have that.
Yeah.
Can't afford not to.
Rocky, you want to?
I'm agreeing with it, yes. And how much more is this going to cost? If we go four and a half, how much more is this than what we were paying on the levy that we lost?
Well, I don't know if I have an answer to that one. Uh, I, I believe, I believe they brought in about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, something like that. And on a, on a, uh. On a four and a half bill, we're going to be bringing in three hundred and seventy-five thousand, we're bringing in about a hundred and five thousand more. As far as what the actual cost was back there, I don't have those figures still. I don't know. It's, it's been gone, you know, and that's one of the reasons why our village is in the shape it's in. And it failed by three votes, okay? And I think we've done a much better job of communicating to our residents. I bel, I believe that's true.
But that was the last administration when we voted.
Well, you had three of them.
They weren't happy with the last administration. The people weren't. Well, we guess that might have been the issue, but we really don't know. Some people might just not want to hate about.
We just know that in twenty twenty-one, there was very little information to get out.
Yeah.
Dale in the meetings kept asking that there be something, put in the water bill just to tell people. Don't, not that you vote for it, but there's a lease of election. And I'll be quite frankly, frank with you, we had one council member who's now sitting here tonight, that we're the two.
Okay, my point was, so that the public understands. What you're going to be paying, whether four or four and a half, isn't significantly more than what you were paying for years.
Yeah, I don't know what that was. The difference, I mean, I'm not even sure how you figure it out.
Well, the first time it was, uh, it was on the old evaluation.
Yeah.
That's why it's so much less. The second time was the old evaluation when it went down. But this last time, as I understand it correct. It would have been the new reevaluation.
If we weren't given those numbers, the numbers would be had to go by our old value.
Right, right.
I didn't tell them because they want to hear it.
Right, right, but that, that's the amount of money because our evaluation have increased.
Well, I think there's, yeah, there's a lot of variables there. I can talk, I can talk through, but how, how much, what was the mileage of the levy that, that failed that came off?
Well, the, uh, the, the renewal.
Five point nine six, I mean, regardless, I think. In apples to apples comparison here, it's hard to say in the past what it was because your valuation is much lower. But it was still five point nine mils. So it's hard to say what, what you were paying then at five point nine, nine mils off the valuation of. A, a mil generated sixty-five thousand or something, now it generates eighty-two. But it's hard to do like a past-present comparison because if, if that would have passed. Then now it renews, it, it would be the same, it would be effectively one point four or one point five mils higher, which is. I mean, you would be paying around. What is it? You'd be paying around seventy-five to a hundred dollars less on this one. If you have five point nine, same.
Even if it's more, I mean, it's worth noting that it's been inflation in the last three or four years. If, if we pay an extra hundred dollars more, two hundred dollars more than we did the last time, I think that's the expected.
It, it should be expected, doesn't mean that, I think this is where limits come from, and I think concerns are valid. I think there were years, we don't know where our limits have come.
Well, and I, I don't know what to cut off the days when you present this information properly.
Well, we got to vote tonight. So we're going to put on November, we got to get this resolution passed with the correct heading. You have to get it certified, and we've already scheduled a special meeting that is in July. Because we won't get it on the ballot kind if we don't, so there is no more time to, to, to waste.
I think that there'll be a committee maybe that presents that information to the public.
Well, we talked about that for a second because we do have one person who's volunteered to be on the committee, one. We need more than one person to be part of that committee. And while that person, you know, as, as volunteer, she also has helpers. She cannot do anything. We need a committee of about four, probably four to five residents who would be willing to. To, once it's done, in other words, once it's decided and it's, and it's going to the ballot. We are not the people who can talk about that, that committee can't, they can, they can draft letters, they can purchase. They can raise money, they can purchase signs, they can create literature and they can distribute that. And support the levy and ask people to vote for it. We are limited. We cannot go out as elected officials and say to people, you need to vote for it. We need to say all that now. That's what we've been doing. We've been trying to get the message out, we have a need, here it is. Get it out before we vote. That's what we've been doing. And that's a reverse process than the old one. The old way was they vote, put it on, and then they. They presented it in factual information, which is what legally, that's all they could do. Okay, they could give you a newsletter, they could tell you what it was going to cost, but they could not have a. And we have no ability to do that once council votes. And Rob, you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, that it's the vote at the special meeting where we vote to put on the ballot. Is where it stops where we can talk, where we can actually get.
I believe that's correct, I believe it. Um, motion tonight and then it goes, it's certified. The next, what residents have to do is the residents.
That's correct. And then after, after that's done. That's when we sort of have to back out of what we're doing now.
Correct.
We can answer questions, we can give people factual information.
We can provide the information, this is what fire levy costs, this is what the police levy costs. The intended purpose of this levy is to cover the contract that the police fire. Um, we cannot promote the levy.
Right.
I, I think even right now. Talking about Rockaway, you're talking about maybe. That we need, maybe because.
Well, the village speaks.
The council's not part of the committee.
The only, those are.
Residents can form a committee to promote the levy if they are in favor of it. They can also do the opposite, if someone's against it, they can also do that, but, uh, in the past. Um, I was very unsuccessful in getting any residents to get involved in that process.
So please out there.
Are we ready to move forward?
We need to know where you are. Does anybody want to make a motion, either four or four and a half?
I'll make a motion for four and a half.
A motion to place a tax levy or certification. Okay, five, okay, that, a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by this Meister?
What resolution number will this be?
This is resolution number ten.
Ten, okay.
Okay, and I was, and, and Rob, you don't need to. And, yeah, we already have that. Okay, so let me have that. And I'll read, I'll actually read the resolution you're voting on. It does not have to be done also as suspending the rules.
Correct.
Okay, so the first motion would be for resolution number ten. The resolution declared the accessory to rung attacks in excess of a ten mil limitation. For the purpose of driving operating expenses for building Cleaves, Hamilton County, and further requesting the county auditor to certify. Matters of connection therein and requesting certification from the Hamilton County Auditor. And that would be at a, uh, four mil levy.
Four point five.
Four, four, sorry, four forty-five, I'm sorry. So as I'm reading. So as I'm reading all this, it says now therefore be resolved by the police council, the village of Cleveland, Hamilton, in Iowa, that two-thirds and all members are likely thereto occurring to the authorized levy and additional tax of four point nine mill. The cost due to tax excess will take no limitation for the benefit of the village of Cleveland for the purpose of public safety. Operational expenses, the village of Cleveland, Hamilton County gets authorized by revised code five seven oh five, four one nine, section one, at a rate not to see need number mills, what is this need number mills?
Four point five.
When you get, well. Okay, four point five mils, which is one dollar of taxable value. Okay, so we're really voting to suspend the rule at the equivalent rate of a hundred thousand dollars. Is it a praise value or is it market value?
It's market value.
You have a praise, and I believe it's a worth it.
It's market value.
When I was looking at the treasurer's office, it was a praise and tax for.
Okay, and the proposed tax levy will be at a rate four point five mils generating approximately three hundred and seventy-five thousand, twenty-seven dollars annually for the purpose of public safety. That is the figure that the auditor will have to verify. And if it's different, that is the figure we would put forward. So do I have a motion to suspend the rules and pass resolution number ten? Move, moved by Mr. Babel.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Meister. Any further discussion? Can we call the roll?
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Angeline?
Yes.
Ms. Meister?
Yes.
Mr. Babel?
Yay.
Ms. Bolton?
Yay.
Motion passes five zero. Now we need to have a motion to pass and adopt resolution number ten, a resolution to care, requiring the necessity to levy a tax excess of a ten-mill limitation for the purpose of providing operating expenses for the village of Cleveland, Hamilton County, and further requesting the county auditor certify matters in connection therein, and requesting certification of the Hamilton County Auditor for a four point five bill levy.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Of Rob? Was Stephanie calling?
Yeah, that's two thirds.
So we would need four yay?
Yeah.
Or five yay? Or was two minutes? Okay.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion? Did we already get a motion for that?
No, you got done reading and then I get a question.
All right. So I need a motion to pass and adopt resolution number ten.
Move.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Babel, seconded by this Meister. Any further discussion?
I'm, I'm, I just wanna make a personal comment here. I've had the unfortunate ability to have the Miami Township Fire Department, I have the last nine months, probably four times, to take care of my wife. And thank God we got him. And we can't live without a, a good fire department, a good life squad. And, uh, that's one of my main reasons for making that motion.
Just note, you'll make sure that's in the minutes, buddy? Would you call the roll first?
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Angeline?
Yes.
Ms. Meister?
Yes.
Mr. Babel?
Yay.
Ms. Bolton?
Missed that, my nerves aside, yay.
Motion passes five zero.
Yes, that's a tough take, that helps with that.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to the next on the agenda, I wait that time for Mr. A, A, to get his report. I've been, no, I'm too.
You can cover everything, so I can make my report when you're.
I definitely try to do that. First, I continue working with the, uh, state on just coordinating the audit, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three audit, there's uh, some additional items that they've asked for, uh, to complete it, and one of those was historic Pay Corps records, we don't use Pay Corps any longer, so that's been a challenge, that's why it's kind of been an extended process, I continue to work with them. Addison Waterline Project and, uh, potential bulk water sales in Village of Addison. For you, those of you that aren't aware, we have a grant award for three hundred thousand dollars, uh, to extend the infrastructure to Addison. Uh, basically tap into their system with a pressure release valve and start providing them, uh, Cleveland's water. I had recently attended a joint meeting with Addison's Utility Board to discuss this. Shared some updates with Mayor Mear, who she provided, which she's provided to the, uh, the Water Board, and they're currently reviewing outreach structure and, uh, the proposal that I sent to them. And on the twenty-second of this month, I will have a joint meeting with Village of Addison, Ohio EPA, and some other partners, just to advance our discussions and negotiations there to see, uh, where Addison would like, would like to be for our service in the future. Employee benefits, we finally wrapped that up. I received everybody's enrollment forms, and I submitted that to our partners, uh, two weeks ago, so that's complete. Everybody is good for, uh, twenty-five and then twenty-six. Summer market kicked off two weeks ago. Um, thank you, Ms. Angeline, for that. I know it's been a lot of work. I, I appreciate the passion, and I think it's those kind of things that are going to, uh, to justify our hard work, so thank you for that. I attended the event, I know some of you did, I think it was a great turnout. It was the first, so I think, you know, the first is always that hardest to get through. Uh, you know, I, I went to the vendors, did a knock down the ballpark with good vendors. Uh, the bad news is now my wife will probably make me buy all of that stuff over again. Uh, but anyway, thank you for that. Uh, solicitor permitting and a no-knock program. So we've talked about this over, you know, a few months. We currently have a, an ordinance that regulates, uh, solicitors and vendors in the village. But like many things, we have an inability to enforce it. And so we've been working diligently to come up with not only a new application and process for people, solicitors that wanna go door to door to come in, apply, register with the village, uh, follow our local organs to make sure that, you know, they pass a criminal check, and they're gonna operate within the limitations, uh, that we outline. But also another step of that was creating, you know, we've kind of coined a no-knock list. That'll be a program where residents who don't want solicitors to come to their house to register with our clerk here at the village. And once you're on that list, you'll get one of these, uh, these nice red stickers. Um, and really, this is designed to comply with the organs and, and, you know, the dimensions and language that's required there. So we have the stickers, we've created the application, and the next month we look to roll that out. Um, not that it's anything fancy, but I brought one for everybody to see, and if council would like to look at it. Basically, if you register for the no-knock list, you'll put this in a conspicuous place, a window by your front door, under storm door. So when a solicitor may be out walking about, they'll see that sticker clearly, and they know, move on, this is a house that doesn't want you to solicit. U.S. median maintenance, um, we received a complaint on this from, I don't believe it was a resident of Cleveland, but a nearby resident who drives US fifty. Um, we recognize the weeds in the median are an eyesore. Uh, our service department would have been that much earlier in the year if it weren't on the flood, and some of the other things, it's a precedent. Uh, it's also important to note, they can't go out there on US fifty highway and do that themselves. Uh, it's a coordinated effort. Uh, it's not, it wouldn't be safe, it wouldn't be out there, and I wouldn't allow them to do it. We have the contract with, um, the traffic solutions company that comes out, closes the lane, makes sure there's proper markings, make sure that our crews are safe. Next Wednesday and Thursday, if you experience lane, one lane closure on US fifty in either directions, because our crews are out there, removing all those weeds, street sweeping and cleaning it up. So that'll happen next week. It'll, definitely a one-day project, possibly a two. Uh, Firth Suburbs, um, of Southwest Ohio. Probably share that I've been appointed to the executive board of that group, and I had my first meeting with them on June thirtieth. Didn't know much about it, um, until I was asked to be a part of it. Uh, but it's really, it's a, it's a great resource. It's for legacy, older legacy communities of Southwest Ohio, uh, and they just collaborate for reinvestment, equity, sustainability, um, in our communities. Not that this pertains to us, but, uh, when you look at the central part of the county, even there, a lot like Redding, um, for parking along, they experienced these train blockages, they just gridlocked it. And so the Firth Suburbs, uh, group was able to get a grant, uh, for five million dollars to address those for, uh, for the central, the central communities. I also learned when I was there, which I spoke to briefly, uh, to your question, ma'am, but, you know, it's just to get back to these code, our code enforcement, um, not being for profit. You know, the county has a, a program called Revive and Thrive. Basically, it's a home repair loan program. And we, I wouldn't have known anything about it if it worked for being part of this group. That offers up to twenty thousand dollars in loans for any resident, as long as they have a credit score of five forty. Um, so pre-low, your home valuation, there's certain limitations, but pretty broad. And so our goal using this program is, you know, let's say you've had some hard times, um, tree collapsed on your roof, um, you have swirls coming in now, and it's only, it, it's only a code enforcement issue, and we have to address that, right? But rather than being punitive and issuing a citation, we can extend this offer. Why don't you apply for the Revive and Thrive program? Get an app, you know, once you show us that you've applied for it, you've got the loan, and you're going to make the repairs, we'll hold off on citing you, being punitive. And I think that's our goal here, not, not to generate profit and build a core. So I think there's a lot of programs like this, and I just, I think it's, it's gonna be really good to, uh, network or. One of the safety committee, uh, initiatives was CPR AED training, uh, Ms. Meister brought that up. Too long ago, we had some challenges finding a certified instructor. That's not scheduled for October, it'll be done Station sixty-nine. Um, we'll provide lunch that day for all of our employees and the two trainers, and I thank Miami Township Fire Department for doing that for us. Um, some traffic and safety enhancements that we discussed came out of safety committee. We recently saw a new parking sign at the Preston Scott Street, and that's the mitigative line spot hazard. Also, on Scott Street at West Gate, um, we purchased and we're in the process of installing a convex mirror to address another blind spot, specifically when you're at Scott Street and making that left turn on West Gate, you can't see people coming up there. So this mirror will, you know, create a forty-foot view to eliminate that blind spot. Um, accessible parking signage update, a few months ago, we passed an ordinance addressing accessible handicap parking on the roadway. You pass this around, this is what it will look like. It won't replace the handicap accessible sign. This will be placed right below any handicap accessible on-street sign, um, to indicate, uh, who it belongs to, which permit number it belongs to, and they'll have a corresponding sticker or parking hanger, um, that they'll have on the car. If you wanna pass that or have a look at it. I sent notices, notices to the four residents that currently have those about two weeks ago. I sent them applications at that time, they don't see me back, um, but they have until about the twentieth this month, uh, to apply, to maintain their spot. The goal is to get that form online, any resident that may need it in the future, kind of apply online, we'll process it, install it, uh, the needs there. The last thing I have, a few months ago, we talked about the electric aggregation program renewal, and council passed a resolution to allow me to negotiate. At that time, I told you gas wasn't yet due, but it's coming up. Our gas doesn't, uh, expire until October. However, the market at this point, um, probably at the, the best rates that we're going to find. So our goal is to execute a contract as soon as tomorrow on gas rates. Uh, it's a recommendation, and all of our partner communities agreed a twenty-four-month agreement. We were really hoping to get around that sixty cent mark for CCF. Today, it was fifty-six cents, and we believe it can drop to fifty-four cents, or maybe even fifty-three tomorrow. If it does, we're gonna lock that in, and I'll execute it tomorrow after. So with that.
Justin, can you, can you remind us what other communities are entering into this aggregate with us?
We have not, there's nine communities that partner with us for electric. There's six that partner with us, uh, for gas. I don't know which six of the nine are gas. I know that Chivi is one. When I'm talking to electric, Chivi, Indian Hill, Lee Mottland, uh, I don't know that Miami Township's in our aggregation. I think they have a separate one now. Um, those are the three that come to mind.
But there are others, I just wanted to.
Yes, if you give me one second, I could probably, I could answer.
So we're going into negotiation with the Power Multi community.
Yes.
Power Multi.
I can, I can get you that answer before long, so. So, uh, Windale is one, Columbia Township is one, Indian Hill, us, that leaves Chivi with the other, which is.
With the gas.
With the gas, yes. And, and Amberly.
Well, if you're partnering with Indian Hill and Amberly Village, that's not too bad.
I think of it as their partnering.
Columbia Township, yeah. And then the Village of Cleveland.
I mean, I've been talking to the state watering house, our administrator.
In fact, stickers will be from one resident and be passed on to the family members, because there's somebody looking at one of our hotels.
Right, so we haven't decided if it'll be a small sticker or a windshield, or if it'll be like a flip hangers you have, right, where the handicap will go, it'll be smaller. It will have, just like these, there'll be s- the, the placard around your vehicle will be serialized, and it'll match, it'll match the sign that I've passed around.
I just noticed somebody that might have used it.
Yeah, and, and it'll start to see, but this will go below it. So right here, there's a prime number.
I think it should be a.
But.
I don't think I have a number, you know, something, yeah, that's great. Maybe it could be a H, H one, maybe.
Right, and the other thing I'd like to note there, when you, why it does ask for your vehicle number. So, yeah, I think sticker may be the way to go, and not pretend to move it.
Any other questions for the village of this?
Thank you. I do wanna say that I had a solicitor knock on my door quarter till nine at night, on a weekday night. I was in my P J, talking around and waiting at the door. But I, I thought quarter till nine at night, and it was for bug festival. Um, so I'm really happy to see us moving forward on that. The sticker will be on my window.
I know it's been a lengthy process, it just, it takes time to design these before, and, uh, I think we're starting to see things that we worked on aggressively in fall and winter that are now being implemented. So we're ready to continue them.
We had two in one day, another time.
Did they get dropped off?
West Gate, yeah, West Gate, yeah.
Any other questions for the village of this? Now I'm gonna move on to my mayor. Go ahead. Any question? Okay, I'm gonna move into my mayor's report. I changed it, and the reason I changed this, and this, I'm putting this on the record for our residents, but I'm also putting it on the record for Chevy nine dudes. So I, there's a dual purpose. If you haven't seen the I, the IT report, you, you should, okay, take a look at it. So I just got, okay, to discuss America Ohio two fifty celebration tonight, or our successful vision, or I will deal with that next month. But for time constraints, I felt this was more important. So however, due to inaccurate and misleading report by Diane Ball, WCPO, IT reporter, I must address our residents and council members. I must address our residents and council members with my official response. WCPO claims to uphold high journalistic standards. But I disagree based on their report. Let me highlight some of the principles from WCPO's parent organization. WE Scripps Journalism Guidelines. These are the ethical standards that Channel Nine professes to follow. And not all of them. There's ten and a half pages of it. Okay, I chose to deal with the following, honestly. They state in their, in their, in their document, careful in the use of archival material. So not to mislead people. Or leave the impression that archival material was gathered as part of current reporting. There's a second issue that I identified. I could have identified more. That deals with editing. They claim that we use quotes or sambines to best tell the story, but never change the intent. Or meaning of what the source said. Partial quotes are acceptable. When using only a partial quote, it does not change the meaning or context. This is what they say they're gonna do. Unscheduled interviews. Unscheduled interviews a manager must grant prior approval for a journalist to plan an unscheduled interview. Where the source does not realize they are about to be interviewed. And will likely be unprepared and defense. Fact checking. According to their document, they make every effort to fact check and verify what the source has told us. If the source cannot provide any supportive information or documentation, we avoid using that source. And the last area that I believe they failed their objective is the source itself. We consider is the source a trustworthy source. If the source has a discernible bias or agenda, we should explain that clearly to the audience. None of that was done in the IT report. So despite those guidelines, WCPO have failed to adhere to them. As Mayor of the Village of Cleves, I do not believe we owe any media outlet an interview that's requested at two thirty PM. On July third, twenty twenty-five, a holiday weekend with no advance warning. Dan Monk spoke to Justin Hadey, our village administrator, on July first, twenty twenty-five. For about twenty minutes on the phone. Mr. Hadey answered all questions that he asked. About the clean court, the proposed levy, and provided budgetary documents. But when Justin was asked for the interview, he declined it. I fully support his refusal based on WCPO's inaccurate report about his time. As a police officer at Elmwood Place. Our law director has solid evidence that should have led to its removal. Or an updated article, which is also stated in their, their code. That they will remove it or they will alter it. But what I understand, Rob, you can correct me if you're wrong, they've had that information for quite a while. But they have not corrected the past. In fact, they used that same report. In the IT media or. Report that just aired. So I want to address specific mistake, misstatements made by the IT report. They claim that we refused an on-air interview. That claim is one hundred percent false. Dan Monk. Okay, on July third, twenty twenty-five and eleven twenty-six AM. Called Mr. Hadey from a private number and said, just so you know, this is Dan Monk and you're live and I'm camera. Mr. Hadey spent some time, not very long, explaining to him certain things that. I don't remember exactly what they were, Justin, maybe you could share that. But explained to him information that he was requesting. Am I correcting that?
Yes, I led him to the appropriate parties to answer his question.
And those parties were Rob, Merkel, and me. Dan Monk then emailed us, and I'm referring to Rob. At eleven thirty-eight AM requesting an on-camera interview. I responded at twelve oh five PM. And I questioned the ethics of his approach. How did I do that? Basically, what I asked him for was to give me the name of the journalism school and the class on ethics. And showed that that was an appropriate way of conducting an interview. That is a question that remains unanswered, not today. I would have given him an interview about how, but he did not. So instead, in his report, he claims that we refused. There's another issue with that. Rob also offered an interview with. WCPO, but there were conditions. One is it was a live interview and unedited. In their report, they never mentioned any of those things. They simply said, we refused to give them an interview. That is absolutely false. They also claimed in their report that we were going to issue arrest warrants for grass cutting. WCPO also reported here. There is never going to be an arrest warrant for not cutting your grass. That has never been discussed and it will never be considered. Where that came from, I have no idea, but that's not anything that's been discussed in the Village of Cleves. Now I'm gonna move on to their sources. Who is their source? The source is a Cleves resident. And he was my opponent for mayor in twenty twenty-three. I have not mentioned his name. I never mentioned his name during the campaign and I refuse to do so today. This resident, though, is known by almost everybody in the Village of Cleves. For self-aggrandizing, creating hyperbole. Being anti-Cleves Police Department. Failing to maintain his property and above all, hating Justin Hadey. That has been demonstrated time and time again. In fact, WCPO was present the night that Justin was hired. Where he threatened him in council chambers. That was actually recorded by the WCPO reporter that night. So going back to September. Excuse me. Justin also made Dan Monk aware of the fact that he had the audio clip from that reporter. And he asked for it. Justin made it available to him and he has never picked it up. So that's the source that they're referring to. That same resident has a historical bias against the Cleves Police Department. How do I know that? Because he was very active in twenty twenty. I actually have pictures and I know it's out there on social media that where he was protesting against the Cleves Police. And in particular against Justin Hadey. If that's not a bias. That they claim that they take into consideration on their sources. Then they haven't done a very good job as fact, a fact check. This resident also has a disregard for maintaining his own property. Even when it devalues his neighbor's property. WCPO reporters could have done some research on this. And then have. They could have talked to residents who know him and understand. So they disregarded their standard to not use a source that is unreliable or biased. Unverified claims. WCPO aired unverified claims by the same resident that I campaigned. To bring back the police, police department. Now Lynn DeBolt called me this morning and goes, that never happened. That's absolutely correct. It never happened. Neither Channel Nine nor any of our residents have ever seen any campaign literature supporting this. Similarly, his claim of one thousand two hundred signatures on a petition. To fire Justin Hadey is misleading. That was a change dot org petition. Those petitions are globally distributed. And can be filled out multiple times by the same individual. Any journalist that is doing any type of fact check should know that. I can actually tell you who's one of the biggest funders of that, but that's not my purpose. Because I went ahead and did the research on it. But I will say this. The fact that there is no internal measures. And the fact that anybody can fill it out and they can fill it out multiple times anywhere across the world. Makes it statistically unreliable. And here's the kicker. Gathering twelve thousand, I'm sorry, twelve hundred signatures out of the entire world. Is insignificant and it's meaningless. Yet somehow or other, there was no mention in this IT investigative report. Any of that. Mr., I'm sorry, didn't mention his name. The same resident, okay, claimed last year. That, that he was being harassed by Arizona. And Mr. Monk questioned that to Mr. Hadey. He was given at that time, he claimed that he was being, gonna be. I don't know, was arrested or whatever he was claiming. But he, all he got was a warning. He didn't even get a citation. He got a warning to cut his grass. I have those documents. I also have the vulgar and profane email he sent Ed Lindenschmidt. And so does Dan Monk. He has a copy of it. He has seen it. That alone ought to give him some indication about how reliable that source is.
Did he see that before the interview?
Oh, yeah, that's a long time. The last September is.
So he knows and he doesn't rehearse.
Well, I'm gonna go on further than that. Okay? What about the misrepresentation about the council meeting? And in this one, he's taking video footage from our December council meeting. And in that meeting, the council was, they were discussing the police department, whether to bring it back. What was, what would it look like? So they took footage of Gary Walters questioning the council members. As you were considering that legislation and questioning the village administrator. Okay? In other words, the whole council was discussing, but we took one section. That Gary Walters brought up about whether the guy was gonna be wearing. Street armor, would he have a gun? Okay, and Justin responded that appropriately that night. The answer is yes. They are a full-fledged police officer with all police powers. And yes, when you go into a situation. You don't know what you're gonna face. You have a right to defend yourself, but. They only took that one little clip. And it's almost as if whatever else was discussed didn't matter. They talked about the fact that they wanna keep things accurate and in context. To do that, you would have to take the entire conversation. That wasn't done. Now, I will make one statement in addition to that. What the council did that night was a practice that was never done under the Myers administration. There was very little discussion. And quite frankly, if you were a village resident, you probably ought not to ask questions. We have tried to change all of that. Now I wanna be clear for the public because they make it sound like everybody's confused about what the role. Is of our, of our village administrator and town marshal. So I wanna be clear. At no point in time did this council put into an ordinance. That Justin would be acting as a police officer. He is an administrative head. Okay, and no, even though it was implied in there and probably even said, he will not be carrying a gun. Okay, in his everyday role. He knows what that role is. So let me be clear. We're not up and operating just yet. We still have obstacles that we have to overcome. And those obstacles. Until they are overcome, that means a lease, a lease terminal, RCIC terminal. A pure old motor vehicles terminal. We can't totally function, nor can we develop policies. Which is gonna be his number one job as to how our police department will support the Hamilton County Sheriff's Department. Okay, and what role they'll play as far as detective. Mr. Hadey serves as a liaison to the Hamilton County Sheriff's Department. Our primary law enforcement. They did get that one right in their report. They remain our primary law enforcement agency. But. Justin will supervise and assign cases to our investigators of the Hamilton County Sheriff's Department. Does not and cannot deal with. I believe based on what I saw, their use of the Elmwood Place video was sensationalizing. It's a disproven video. And they did this while we seek support for a safety levy to fund our police and fire services. At best, that is irresponsible journalism. Finally, as Mayor of the Village of Cleves, I want to unequivocally express my and council's full support. For Mr. Hadey as our village administrator and village marshal. While we appreciate WCPO's efforts to provide information about our village. We do not appreciate their continued report and unfounded claims about Mr. Hadey's past. And I want to be clear, it will not alter our unwavering support for his leadership. Additionally, WCPO claimed that they filed numerous public records requests for his background check. That is also false. I went through today and I took a look at all the communications. The only one I could find was one and I went back and referenced Mr. Merkel's compliance and what he sent them. So that also is false. They have all public records. They have been fulfilled. Including the only one we didn't have at the time, which is the Bureau, Ohio Bureau of Criminal Investigation report. They have that report. They need nothing else. So I wanna be clear to our public and I wanna be clear to WCPO tell. They have ethical guidelines to follow. As a village, all we ask is that they follow and report appropriately and honestly. And that when they are getting sources from other residents, they talk to other residents, not just the one. Who was a mayor candidate who got beat with twenty-five percent of the vote. That's all I need to say tonight. I thank you for listening. I thank those at home. And I would be glad to answer any questions anybody might have.
And you still?
Well, I don't think the village chooses. And quite frankly, when you're dealing with the media, you have to prove malice. You have to prove malice. And that is a tough standard to do. And any lawsuit is costly.
I think you just spelled out malice.
Well, I think I did too, but. But that doesn't mean you're gonna prevail in a court. Well, I think I did too, but, but that doesn't mean you're gonna prevail in a court.
What can't be done. Can you see the guy that told him that stuff? We know who he is.
I think, Mary, to answer your question, I think all we can do is what I just did. If there's something else out there, I don't know what it is.
I think given some arrests on him, I assume that he's been sent to you and you should consider training.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't know if I've ever caught that. But I came prepared tonight, just in case that resident came. And I have all the emails. Every time I send a message out to the residents, which he gets, I will get a very vulgar email response. I never respond to those, but I have kept them. And for the record, they are publicly correct. So I don't know how they would look at that individual as a reliable source. This doesn't make any sense. And I'm sort of finished unless you have a question.
Well, I, I would like to add to that, that the process that we followed to hire our village administrator was uniquely, uh, in-depth. The interview process was a more complex process than I've ever seen in 50 years in the workforce. Thorough background checks. I, we did not in any way, shape, or form make a hasty decision. I mean, Chuck, you took, you took that to a new level as far as what I was doing. So all I can tell you is, I think that I throw my support 100% behind our decision. And don't have any doubts at all that we thoroughly did our homework on this issue. That's my, and you for what it's, I actually very much thank you. I appreciate it.
And I can say that, um, I, I looked at a lot of stuff in his background when, uh, he was being hired. Uh, and I, I'm retired from law enforcement. I was in supervision. I've since helped administrations with HR issues, um, you know, personnel file issues, that kind of stuff. I've been contracted to do stuff. Um, and when I, when I looked at, at viewed his personnel file at Elmwood, I was, I was kind of puzzled. Because all of the, um, all the incidents that Craig Cheatham put out there initially on this case that Dan Monk still chases from years ago, the, there was, there was definitely things wrong with it. I mean, the complaints didn't have the officers in charge. Had no idea how they got in there. Um, nothing was done, never investigated. Um, some of the, there was question to some of their validity in the first place. And so I, I knew the administration at Elmwood when he was there. So I called Dr. Bill Cheatham. I called Dr. Lieutenant. They said, "No, there shouldn't have been anything like that." Um, but they said that the, the mayor at the time was putting stuff in there despite the law director telling him not to. It eventually got stopped, but then the new mayor that came in that had a, uh, a beef with Justin for, um, for no reason really at all, um, fired him and his personnel file got proven and stuff. So I went to the mayor and spoke to the mayor and, and pointed it out. I also looked at their law record. And I'm like, "This is, this is ridiculous." I mean, this is, this ruins someone's career and has Channel Nine pounding a drum. And, I mean, and Dan Monk goes back and pounded the same drum from 2020, wasn't it? 16, 18? And, and it's, no, that's the Dan Monk chase. It's, it's absolutely ridiculous. But I can tell you that, that some of the stuff in there, I directly proved this is wrong. The mayor has since, because you can't remove stuff, the mayor has since put a letter in there exonerating it multiple times. So that's where it stands now. And Channel Nine was, was terrible in their, in their reporting, so I bet you'd say they might even know.
Yeah. Unfortunately, there's collateral damage from that kind of stuff.
With that one?
Even in the, what the report has, and I didn't address those tonight, because there's legal ramifications with that, so I was careful what I addressed tonight. There's more trouble in that arc than what I addressed here tonight. And I think I gave you enough of an idea of just how bad that is. So, under no circumstances, okay, Rob was very clear about, "We're willing to do an on-camera interview." In his email. We have that documentation. They chose not to include that.
He, they chose to say that I made a statement on behalf of the village and took enforcement from the mail that had no, and put it in there. It was an email. It wasn't a statement. And it was offering to do an, an on-camera interview with Mike. And he never responded. And I sent that at 5:17 PM on July 3rd.
Well, he's doing a good job. I mean, seriously.
Yeah, he is doing a good job.
He's doing a good job.
He's doing a fantastic.
Yeah. Unfortunately, this kind of stuff takes a personal note. And for you, I feel bad about that.
Thank you.
It's a shame. You don't deserve it. Yeah. And, uh, I think it's unfortunate.
I appreciate it.
Well, I remember the mayor himself calling people personally and giving us names if possible. And Bobby Hoss, my husband, said he had the experience, not that I told you. Yes, I mean, I'll be totally honest.
Thank you.
We were very transparent in front of them. So I think it's time to move on to our committee reports at this point. And I don't, I don't have any intended in order for them. Gary, is he in our next call, Mayor?
Well, it's fine. It's, well, I mean, we have beaten a levy to death. There's nothing else in fine in a binding report. And then it would be my, 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 my. One minute?
All right. Safety Committee met on July 1st. Some of the things, uh, our administrators already covered, so I'll try to stick over all those. Um, the Hamilton County Sheriff, Sergeant Carney has requested, he's having a hard time obtaining the Communication Center reports because of the Safety Committee following the first Thursday of the month, which was past month of fail on from our birth. So we discussed it and we are recommending that he just start going back to attending the council meetings like he has done in the past. That way he can give his report to all council. If anybody has any questions, they can touch in. Uh, I think initially we moved the fire police reports to the committee because when the new mayor took office, there were so many things needing to be addressed. Um, so we will, we'll move him back to, and then the Miami County Fire, they are, uh, Captain Yanko is supposed to be attending the meetings quarterly, and we have discussed starting July, which is not here. So I will send him a reminder email unless you want to.
Whatever's easier. I'll be, I'll, I'll ask you.
I can send just send him a reminder. Wasn't happening, but he did some, uh, need with a very detailed, very thorough, uh, first items regards to the resident emergency notification system. The director proudly had reached out to Justin, indicated that the new employee they were waiting to be onboarded was onboarded and trained, but is now agreementally, she's gonna be reaching out to Mr. Hayden, set up training, which will occur sometime after July 2nd. We did receive information from Sergeant Carney regarding traffic accidents that had occurred uh, at the intersection of Route 50 and Cooper. Uh, we've had residents express safety concerns about that intersection. We were given data from October 2020 all the way through January 2025. And we looked at, the Safety Committee looked at that data and the number of accidents, and we decided that there's no further action that we feel needed to be taken at this time. Uh, regarding the North and South Miami speed data signs, um, our administrator Hayden will be continuing to share this data with Sergeant Carney on a monthly basis. They will have deputies conduct targeted enforcement in those areas as needed based on the data. And we will note that the sheriff has issued two speeding citations on North Miami and one on South Miami here during the recent. Uh, there was some addition, when we were discussing Scott Street and the safety, we were, we discussed, um, parking in other areas of the village that hinders drivers' ability to see upcoming traffic, specifically where people are parking too close to the signs. Um, and in that discussion, it was suggested that the village paint the curbs yellow to designate the appropriate parking areas, um, and beginning with doing this on North and South Miami. Um, the gate between Coleman Woods and Indian Walk subdivision, it had been previously discussed and a question was brought up regarding possible legalities of opening the street between Coleman Woods and Indian Walk subdivision and not opening the gate between Coleman Woods and West Gate. Um, Mr. Hayden discussed that with our law director, and Mr. Merkel doesn't believe there's any precedent set by having a gate at one location as they are mutually, they are mutually exclusive issues. Additionally, the existing gate is not to an up, adopted roadway. Um, he will draft a legal, official legal opinion prior to any decision regarding roadway connecting Indy, connecting to Indian Walk. And the Safety Committee will be deferring this topic to the Streets Committee once that is formed. As of the Safety Committee meeting on July 1st, there has been no interest. Um, I've not heard from anybody expressing any interest to be on the Streets Committee. So I guess that will be ongoing until we get some in, interest in that. The, there are also a report about the tornado, still a tornado, tornado shelter at CT on Elementary, or I, it's not Elementary.
I can actually update that if you'd like.
So if you want to update that, go ahead.
Sure. Um, so we've been working an initiative to partner with Sheriff's Office and Three Rivers in the event of a tornado warning or impending tornado coming towards Cleves. We recognize that there's some residents that don't have basements. The school was gracious enough to allow us access to that, or, you know, access. The problem is, is who's going to open it? Things move quickly. So I reached out to Sergeant Carney and Sheriff's Office. They've agreed that if there is a tornado warning and a tornado is coming our way, that they'll respond out and unlock it. We tossed around the idea of having like a lockbox on the school. That's not gonna work. However, they're gonna issue key cards and, uh, physical keys that'll be kept at the accident location here at Cleves. And also, all the officers have, uh, access cards and keys in their cruisers. So once we finalize this, we'll add it to the protocol that a tornado warning occurs in Hamilton County. There'll be dispatch to school. They'll open it up. Any resident that needs to see shelter can go there. And that's designated as fallout shelter, so it should be, uh, more than that. It'll take, it's gonna take some time to get that in place. Just, uh, continuing to communicate with school, the comm center, and Sheriff's Office, but that's where it stands.
Well, we discussed a bit, Safety Committee, one thing a bit, one question you had brought up was about, um, handicap access. I know the side entrance there, they have a handicap free app. If that's something you can also address from your.
Yep, definitely.
If you're in Miami, you can help me about that. And then that can also, we'll also be working through the emergency action plan that Mr. Ray was working on. Um, the backwards arrow sign that was installed by Hamilton County from the westbound lane of East State Road that ran in front of the Legion has been reversed to indicate the curb appropriately. Um, and Mr. Hayden is also working with our law director and RCIC to complete and spin an application for a new, or are, which required for police agencies to receive criminal justice information. This is just part of, part of the ongoing efforts of establishing, um, getting everything on the ground and for our mayor's work. Um, okay, old business, not the new business. I will not be at the next Safety Committee meeting, which will be on Thursday, August 7th at 7:00 PM. So I will leave one of the other committee numbers to the meeting in a few minutes. I also will not be at the next council meetings. Um, last week's used in August, or the next special one that's set. I'll be at, oh, I'll be special. I will not be at the August council meeting. I will be at special.
Any questions? Yep. Parks, Parks, yeah. So Parks meeting was consumed by the first, uh, Christmas walk meeting. Um, by design. Uh, thanks for helping me tell the views, uh, whoever was involved in that and for attending. Let's see. We went through a few quick reports. The tree has been planted. Um, so we now have an institutional Christmas tree in the park. Uh, we discussed what grant funding is coming to us from Hamilton County. Uh, and how it will be distributed and some of the features that they're paid for. Also updated the committee that, uh, Three Rivers can no longer provide buses. It might have that was around. But they had a law change. Um, we also discussed feedback and how we can improve a lot of things. Feedback, noted an actionable, um, but maybe not relevant to a report here. We discussed the actual event structure, and I believe we reached consensus. 90% sure that we are going on the Saturday-only event. So as not to conflict with Miami Township's activities. And, um, I forget why else, but it seemed to work out, uh, the business to seem, business etiquette seemed to think that it was more convenient to do one day. We decided our meeting king's that includes 3rd Monday at 6:30 after our regular parks meeting. So we'll not consume our own business. Um, and we spent a lot of time with my advocacy to recreate an actual, uh, with a five-on-C free, uh, committee. Those feedback to keep the number of officers low so that we can keep them filled. Um, but we'll still give people, uh, offers. We'll still give people titles, uh, if we don't give them full seats. But, um, that's also necessary as a vehicle for contributions and, uh, even reaching out to other vets. Theoretically, we're gonna make progress on that for the next meeting, but unfortunately that press on me, I should know. We do have increased involvement from, uh, somebody who reached out through churches and businesses. We thank them for their efforts. And we've still a few ideas, um, but nothing concrete, uh, apart from that. We, we keep people busy from the end of the passport system to the beginning of the parade events. We are going to try to complete our initial round of advocacy to get your participat- participation status early this year, done by the end of August. So anybody listening, please let us know if you're going to re-participate in the parade or in the passport system. Just so we can put your name on stuff, leave the details to later. Um, printing takes a while and we are not giving it in council this year. I guarantee it. A lot of people.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think Staples is a higher, I think it's gonna work out better at Mayport or something. We got enough to do. That is all.
Elmwood is, he's already contracted. I'm a much, you know that, yeah.
Chase said he wouldn't have a problem being in the back of the truck from Port 6.
Drive around how, keep praying what is good.
He said he'd have a problem doing that.
Any questions from the audience or the conference? Well, there are no questions. I want to remind everybody, our next council meeting is on, actually, the next council meeting is a special council meeting. That is on Friday, July.
18.
18.
18.
18.
And we made that in 7:00 PM, correct?
Yes.
So that will be, that will be the one that will have one issue on it. That is to hold on whatever the auditors send back. So that's gonna be the next council meeting. And our next regular council meeting is on August 13th at 7:00 PM. And we're now ready to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Ms. Meister. Seconded by Ms. Angelina. Any further discussion? Any please call the roll.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Angelina?
Yes.
Miss Angeline?
Yes.
Miss Meister?
Yes.
Mister Babel?
Yes.
Miss Bulb?
Yes.
Walk him out as soon as you can.
I'm not walking out. These, these meetings kill me.